This is the record review agenda of the government body of the borough of Bloomingdale, Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. All meetings are adjourned to Friday.
Uh, public events, this is the flag of the United States of America. Consider your honor, for instance, one nation, one entity, individual.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ramada?
Here.
Councilman Brockers?
Present.
Councilwoman? Councilwoman Graviano?
Here.
Councilman Schubert?
Here.
Councilman Gaffey?
Here.
Just for note that, uh, Councilwoman Hudson has been in student for some graduated college. Celebration of the brand of the school. We also have her administrative assistant, Amy Greenspan, who is currently a pre-senior. Our business administrator, Michael Sondemire, and our current attorney, Tony Suller. Public notice statement, the meeting is called pursuant to the reasons of the open public meeting law, added to notice on these meetings advertised for how moves on January 9th, 2025. Copyright provides to local news media and posting continuously with municipal building. Copyright discussions available between public and on file with all the district attorney. As per state wire code, I am required to remind that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers. The main entrance which you entered through, and a secondary exit to the platform where I am seated. If there is an emergency, report it to the exit, through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If there's any questions, please ring for the panel. Senior none, uh, I do leave a motion, authorize your administrative assistant, Amy Greenspan, to testify as a witness or clerk of this council meeting. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, do you not have any presentation? Do we have to break now or can we?
No.
Do I have a motion up? Open up, girl, open come.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any members who do not, please mark.
I have a couple. Uh, first, the transfer of the, 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 who's it going to?
Um, you go ahead. Go ahead.
It's under the, so, it's under the corporation, it's just going underneath all their name. Sal and, uh, the, we're just transferring itself now. Yeah, the business, they're just going to tell us. If they're holding it, they're holding on to it for financial whatever, it's something that Sal and I know about. It's just going to be their name instead of company.
So if something does go missing, what happens?
They'll have to buy it, you may think they'll own it down, but they'll have to buy it.
Um, I'm probably a taxidermist.
We don't know yet, it doesn't matter.
Um, so I have the introduction for the one section, two orders to buy. Now, I can help you, uh, you want to see the, those two years going up ten percent?
Uh, for sure, it's not ten percent. It takes eight percent. And the reason for not to do this is because our sewer cost, um, uh, sewer authority raised us nine percent. See, I have no control over that. It's not the order, it's the sewer issue.
Now, CFO, the well of the order, the company will be done, will be right, nobody in trouble will be there.
We have a surplus of six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
Six hundred?
Seventy-one thousand dollars.
Okay, your question?
We have a surplus of six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We got that, uh, uh. Excess, he's always not raising it for the best of my four, two hundred ninety-four thousand.
How is it, you go to adopt this then, we not, how then you, you need to make some finance and orders by the several direct?
But our surplus, we also want to have a place to, it's happening to me.
We have stock budget, water budget, right, with our water budget. You're not adopting it, it matters, even if you do, but then like budget for the water, then we put a surplus. We'll be, we'll be in the water, uh, toward our, for, 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 for.
Yeah, but I, I mean, you always use so many circles. This is what your name and band of units are in, for 2020, three, 2024, all the years we had a surplus.
Correct. But like you're saying, if you were to raise it up, nine percent, you will have that surplus up here.
I also would like to find out how much like, you know, these things were, you bought that municipal value items, to the store.
Okay. Anyone else wish to go up? Is someone a motion to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, report of the Starwater committees, please.
Maybe it's, uh, weekend, we had, uh, our first day of day, and you had, uh, one, to prepare for the final, um, year. And it was, like.
Let's see if we get there, because they turned out some people from here. Did you hold it?
I did, it linked side like though.
You had, you were modest, everybody.
I don't know, how many, intended, well, intended today.
We expected seventy people, that, we were pretty close there. So we made a bet, it was a great turnout. You know, a lot of things accomplished that day, so, uh, it was good.
Did you, uh, remember I had a question about the river, the back, that gas station, to answer the question back?
I have not talked to her, I've been here to, to my friend, or talk to her, so. But that also should be done, if they, if they, if they, that thing is important.
Oh, yeah, but you get.
Obvious.
Jen?
Obvious, we're, 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 we're.
So, yes.
You know, with Dave? Okay.
Please, go south.
Go south, yes. So we'll go back, we'll go back to the next, you guys.
I'm just for the record, since we're on that meeting here, I thought it was a shame that you guys weren't there because it's so nice when most, that, ecological.
Right.
Environmental, and clean up, it would have been perfect, that's, I thought that would have been a good question, but, all right. Thank you, for the next couple of events, we have, uh, uh, Amy ended, uh, at the birthday celebration, that checklist was starting in, um, in Butler. And that's, uh, early morning, um, it's at eight thirty, eight AM lineup, so, in Butler, and it goes to, uh, Bloomingdale. And, uh, there, uh, Brian Martin, will start off, uh, in, in Butler, and then, um, we'll have a service in, in Bloomingdale. Then, um, moving on to, um, the seniors center, May, as, um, re-put into the system, um, Pat has, this is the second year of May being Older Americans Month. And, um, she did make it a proclamation, and this year's, um, theme, which is, the, the month is almost coming to an end, but, um, it's basically flip the script on aging. And every older American, because I see them working at the Stop and Shop at Lake, and I have, I just have a, had a coworker that we celebrated her eighty-fifth birthday at my job. She only goes three days a work week, but her mind is still there, and she's a value, very valuable to our, our company. So, basically, what we're seeing is that, even though you're a senior, you are still valuable, and you're still necessary. And they had a couple of little, um, something nice, just a couple of things about driving. People always say, oh, you're, she's eighty and still driving, maybe rephrase it, instead of, um, still driving, just say, she drives. Um, basically, that's what flipping the, uh, script on aging needs. Um, just small language, uh, changes help. Um, um, learning doesn't stop with age, it evolves, in fact, adults over sixty are among the fastest growing group of online learners. Um, which is something that, uh, I know the library and the senior center is, uh, is very valuable, a resource for that kind of help. But I, um, anyway, if anyone's interested, Older Americans Month, Flip the Shirts on Aging. And again, um, our senior center is invaluable for many people, um, it's Old Age Club, they have many clubs. And of course, you can see, find all this, all this information online, there's an EZ Pass, um, if you're sixty-five or older, there's, uh, um, EZ Pass discounts for you. Um, the Parat Transit, um, if you have, if you have a senior in town and you can't get them to their appointment, um, the Parat Transit, which is through Piscataway County, it's very helpful. Um, and Bloomingdale is part of, uh, their system. And, uh, then the Piscataway County, um, site is very informative when it comes to, um, the nutrition center, things for veterans, any kind, anything for seniors. Um, and their, the nutrition center calendar, usually, um, Brianna always posts, um, all their, the calendar events on our Bloomingdale website. Plus, um, Pat also, Catherine Cipsey is also, there's a Facebook page that she's also putting in information as well. Anyway, and they also have a bunch of trips coming up, they, they just left today to the Finger Lakes, their Finger Lakes, Lakes trip. They're going in June nineteenth, uh, Casablanca, um, the Little Mermaid on June twenty-fifth. And, um, this, as many of you know, this year, um, they did put the senior center information in with the tax bill, Mike was nice enough to, to, yeah. Um, as far, at next, for the April numbers for, um, Tri-Borough, um, their numbers were a hundred and thirty-one calls. Um, and year-to-date calls are six hundred and thirty-five, uh, the county took thirty-three calls. Tri-Borough had covered sixty-nine of them, they missed thirty-three. And compared to last year's numbers, um, they had five hundred and forty-one. So last year, this year, we had six hundred and forty-five calls year-to-date, and last year, it was five forty-one. And, um, the Tri-Borough, their website also has some information, if you needed to borrow any kind of equipment, they do, uh, loan, loan amount. And they're all gently used and clean equipment, um, which is available on their website.
Yeah, which is like wheelchairs, um, crutches, things that are, walkers?
Wheelchairs, yes. Um, at no charge. Um, also shower seats for most, things like that.
Yes.
Um, they didn't, um, um, have any, uh, teaching, she didn't let me know of any, um, certifications or anything coming up. So, but of course, if any of your children or anyone out there still wanted to, um, to volunteer and learn about it, um, you could definitely go online and speak to, uh, Paul Gale. And their numbers, um, on their website as well. Um, for the library, they always have, um, they have something going on, which is, um, a special, um, event. They want everyone to give them a, a story, because next year, they're going to be celebrating their hundred, one hundred years. And they have a, uh, little, uh, library card, and, but you can also go on their, the website and see. And they want you to scan the QR code and tell a story from, uh, you living here in Bloomingdale. I know a lot of people have all kinds of, um, interesting stories to tell, and this will be, they'll, um, write them down, and it'll be part of the, the history, which is something nice that everyone should, uh, take apart, take part of. Um, as far as their upcoming events, uh, Handbag Bingo was postponed, they may be up to date in the future. Uh, Dueling Pianos is on October seventeenth. Um, they will not be participating in Soul Park Day this year. And they also have, um, again, many book clubs. Uh, today, they started Murder on the Orient Express, and they also have their Stephen King Book, Book Club. They, um, their last meeting, um, they, they're also, they are on Facebook and on Instagram. And according to, um, their numbers, attendance, every month, it just, year, year, year-to-year, attendance has gone up incredibly. And, and as always, they, they have, um, their baby story time is on Mondays, ten thirty AM. And they have open playtime on Tuesdays, ten thirty AM, and their cal, their calendar is also available online.
Correct.
And then also, I don't know if anyone out there needs it, uh, but we do have many food pantries in town. Uh, there's the, um, House of Hope Food Pantry, um, that's, uh, located at the United Methodist Church, sixty-five Main Street. They're always, um, looking for, collect, they always are looking for collections, and if you needed to be put on the list, definitely reach out. And if you have a family in town that, that you think is, needs help, um, definitely, um, look into giving them a hand or letting, leading them in direct direction. And also, Butler Church Management also has a food pantry that feeds over eleven hundred people.
Yeah, and also Santa Fe Center. And I believe the Memphis Church, uh, awesome.
Yes, Methodist Church, and, yeah.
John? One thing, the Sloan Park Festival Committee has been busily working, trying to get the last details down before the event. It's on June fourteenth, from three to nine. Uh, so the, the team there, led by Linda Bennett, follows with Sally Vassili, doing a really good job. We're trying to get the food vendor paperwork in order, but it should be another fantastic event. Probably be better than last year, because I feel like every single one we've had has gotten better and better. A reminder that the road will be closed as part of that, from Main Street, Reeve, and Main Street, we are, so that, that stretch will be closed down, as there'll be vendors on the road. Um, so it kind of helps bridge together, right, the businesses on one side, vendors in the middle, and then, uh, to the park on the other side. That's all.
Okay.
Uh, for the event meets this Thursday, so nothing.
I'll just, uh, mention, because I assume that we're going to hear from the two members of the environmental commission that they're here today at some point. If, uh, if not, uh, we met and discussed that they'll be holding, uh, their own River Cleanup Day. And, uh, are also looking into understanding the damming problems that we have at Oakwood right now, regarding a beaver, retaining the water, making sure that there's, uh, you know, ample water in that pond. We're going to hear, you guys wait her out?
Okay, Mike?
Uh, the only thing is, we're real close on Vogue, uh, getting ready to open up that park. Uh, so I'll get the public events committee, and we'll pick a day, and we'll do it random, but.
I'd just like to invite the, um, county people, since there would be part of, you know, to do that. And also Tilcon, um, we talked to them about, for, um, the, the two hundred tons of stone for the base. Okay?
Yep.
Amy? Uh, just for me, um, what's going on, it's really nice, our super, our supermarket is now, or our, our grocery store in town is open, um, which is great for us. And the other thing, it is EMS week to recognize Trevor First Aid Squad. I will be visiting the, um, building on Thursday at six fifteen. Um, maybe if you'd like to, if you're able, um, to go up there and just be part of their EMS week. I've come just a few times, just go up there and, you know, see the squad, the people that are on shift, talk to them, they show you the equipment. And, um, it's a, it's a small event, which is really nice, we do that kind of yearly with them, so we got the invite to go up there. Um, this Thursday, the twenty-second, I think it is, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's pretty much all I had. Um, Re, uh, Hamburg Turnpike renovation by the county has been put off till after school is out. Um, they thought it would be beneficial, because Hamburg Turnpike is busy enough right now, so they're going to put that off, the tentative start date is June, I think, twenty-sixth. Um, for Hamburg Turnpike, or Main Street, I'll call it, from Riverdale to the, um, Butler Split, um, which will be, um, um, built, paved. Um, stoplights for people crossing, there'll be several of them, so people can likely push the button and walk across Main Street safely. And then they'll be narrowing down at the Reeves Ave intersection, make it a true intersection. If you see it, or I don't know if the red line, you can't even see anymore, the plan to, um, narrow the street down to follow Hamburg Turnpike as it comes up all the way from Riverdale. It will widen so people can cut through the river to Reeves Ave, and you will no longer be able to park delivery trucks going in and out of their businesses there. They stick out way into Hamburg Turnpike, and it's dangerous. So that will be started, hopefully, on June twenty-sixth. It's about a four-week project, um, to do it all. That's pretty much all I have.
They would dig a official slash unofficial news on the open space grant from the county?
Yeah, for a hundred, a hundred, yeah, the, uh, this year's open space that we applied for is approximately a hundred eighty thousand dollars, and we put it to do some work at the Leisure Field. So we were awarded that grant, so that's another grant coming from the, from the county, which is good. So we'll see what we're going to do with that, but it's earmarked for the Leisure Field, correct?
Backstop, miss?
Backstops.
Back, um, shot.
Yep. So that's where we are with that.
I would, I would just make sure, and come June, when they work on Hamburg Turnpike, we know that that means it's going to be increased traffic on Van Damme and Reeve. They're doing a bunch of work, those, those roads get a lot of speed now, as it is, so I'm just, we should talk to Danny, everybody.
They're all aware of it, they all got notification when it's happening, it goes right to Sammy, he's on every email with the, so they are well aware of what's coming on. All right, um, item ten, resolution two thousand twenty-five, five dot thirteen, a consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move. Second.
Okay, any questions? Roll call, please.
Brockers?
Yes.
Catalana?
Yes.
Graviano?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes. Item number eleven, second final reading of public hearing, ordinance number fourteen dash two thousand twenty-five, amend in chapter seven, blockage of intersections, public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public, so that in which we can make it, that it be read by title.
Do I have a motion to read by title?
So move. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Ordnance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, the County of the State, and State of New Jersey, amending chapter seven, traffic, part one, on-street traffic regulations to add section seven dash twenty-seven, blockage of intersections of the code of the borough of Bloomingdale.
Okay, um, before we move into public, this is very simple, intersections, um, I believe it's Van Damme.
Yep.
Okay, um, you probably see that throughout Hamburg Turnpike, any intersection is crossed out with lines, so you cannot stop in those lines when there's traffic backed up, you have to leave it open. So people coming in, crossing over, have a free look to come out without, so it keeps traffic moving. So that's just, we're just adopting what has been done all over the place. Okay, so I have a motion to open a public hearing.
Soon. Second.
All in favor? Aye. And one wishing to come up?
I'm Van Damme, which I got, I asked the street quite a bit, when I come down and go along the Hamburg Turnpike, if I don't pull up, I can't say it. So if you're going to put that crosswalk there.
It's not a crosswalk.
What?
It's the total, the width of Van Damme, complete their cross, Hamburg Turnpike, will be X out.
And walk the box.
No block the box for traffic, so when a car comes from Riverdale, they have to stop before Van Damme, and then, and the other side has to be past it. So that leaves it open, so you can see what's happening.
Okay. I didn't understand that, thank you.
He's to help you.
Yeah. Because it is difficult.
Anyone else? Motion to call a public hearing. So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion for adoption.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Catalana?
Yes.
Graviano?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Brockers?
Yes. Okay, new business, doctor, resolution number two thousand twenty-five, five dot twenty-one, NJ SA forty, A forty dash twenty, temporary appropriations, do I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Graviano?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Brockers?
Yes.
Catalana?
Yes. Item B, adopts a resolution number two thousand twenty-five, five dot twenty-two, uh, payment of the bills, do I have a motion to pay the bills? So move. Roll call.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Brockers?
Yes.
Catalana?
Yes.
Graviano?
Yes. Item C, adopts a resolution number two thousand twenty-five, five dot twenty-three, appointment of a VISA agency, this is our insurance agent. Do I have a motion on that?
So move. Second. Mayor, just, uh, we did make a couple modifications at the eleventh hour, put it in their response files, they should have more of that one in there. Just about, on, I think, item four, talked about the money per employee, that's still not perceived, but they wanted that, to cause, in that each, each, exactly for employee, and that, that.
Okay, that's actually good to know. Roll call, please.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Brockers?
Yes.
Catalana?
Yes.
Graviano?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Item D, introduction of ordinance number seventeen dash two thousand twenty-five, amend to chapter seventeen, water, and chapter eighteen, sewer rates and charges for services. Do I have a motion to read by title?
So move. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Ordnance of the chapter, uh, ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, to amend and supplement chapter seventeen, entitled Water, and chapter eighteen, entitled Sewer, are the revised dinner ordinances of the rural Bloomingdale, including the schedule of rates and charges for services rendered to the users of water supplies of the sanitary services.
So I have a motion to open the public comment.
Final read.
Yeah, she's. June thirteenth?
June thirteenth.
June thirteenth, read the final read. Again, do I have a motion to open the public comment? So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone wishing to come up?
What?
We have, we have.
We told you, oh, sorry.
They probably, you're in.
Talking about the water thing, we're like, what?
No, that's just a nudge.
I love to give you something.
Yeah.
This is just, oh, sorry, I, I'm sorry, Patrick Tissacow the second, Sixth William Street, Bloomingdale, New Jersey. I'm a Libra, and I like long walks on the beach. This is just for general purposes. This is not an in-depth, but it is just a quick read for you guys, even if you want to read it afterwards. Um, so, uh, as a commission member, I try to make my way around town, let people know who I am. I recently received a couple of phone calls, uh, that we have a beaver in the, you know, it's been happening since last year, there's a beaver in Oakwood Lake. Uh, he built his dam, people from the neighborhood go in and decide to rip all of his stuff out of the dam.
Can I just tell you the beaver's gone?
So the beaver has a son.
One son.
The beaver has a son, so, yeah, we're getting there.
Congratulations.
Yeah, remember, we had this conversation in the volleyball the other day, we were talking. So he has a son and a wife who survived the winter, and they have begun their building again. So this little bit of, you know, tension between citizens in our town has continued with, like, so-and-so's pulling it out. Why are they there? They're not supposed to be touching what the beaver's doing. Beavers are considered keystone species. They actually do good work, so they are supposed to be there. So a little further research, we believe that there was, you know, there was always a 12-inch board that was in that dam. So, to appease all, the commission has spoke about possibly putting in a beaver culvert, which is a design that prevents the beaver from building his dam where he built it. The two designs you'll see on the last two pages of the package are an arc design and a trapezoid design. I will talk about those in a moment. I have reached out to the DEP. I am waiting for a response from Dennis Kontois, who is our representative for the north, that would give us an approval to put in a temporary culvert. We don't ever really have plans to put in a permanent culvert. So him saying yes to a temporary would be great because each year, we could either, and I'll get into that more detail, we can either remove and take it out as the beaver comes out of hibernation, put it back in. So it's not, the culvert is not always there. Or we can build what we would consider a semi-permanent, but by their terms, it's still a temporary culvert. Why do we do this? So, the low water levels creates an issue with our fish, with our plants, with overgrowth encroaching onto. We have a reed problem right now. The reeds are starting to come down from the marsh. And if the water levels stay low, where they are right now, we're going to continue to have a problem. So, again, I'm not giving you a presentation, I'm just giving you some casual reading for today. I'm going to wait for my response from Dennis. And I will come back on June 3rd with a little more of a budget, what it would cost. I know we don't want to put this on the DPW. Their union is not going to want to go out there and build a culvert. I do have citizens in the neighborhood that are both environmentalists and engineers that are willing to come out with me and put a culvert in. It is something that would cost approximately under $500 and can be done in a day. If we want to take a look, some of the benefits...
Just my knowledge of that pond. When you have to put people in that pond, you're likely to go, you're wasting mud.
Yes. Yes, we know that it is going to be a challenge.
It's going, yes.
Yeah, so we're going to do, so, with this, there is some research that we're going to talk about. You know what I'm saying? So, as we go through, so a culvert, there's two options. There is a culvert fence, which is in the top right of your corner there in your first page. Then there is a fence and pipe device, which is where, if the beaver starts building up and water is building up, we have pipes that go through that will give you outlets to set your water levels. If you just read this package casually when you get a chance, then there's like starter dams. We don't want to get into a starter dam. We want to be friendly with the beaver, but we don't need them building his own dam and us trying to deal with that dam every year. That is an issue that we do not want to get into. So we're looking at the first two options at the bottom of the page here. The culvert protective fence, or the fence and pipe device.
How big is the pipe?
R. So here's the thing. We are not, that's the thing. This picture is just a reference for you to get an idea of how easy these are to build. That, we don't have a pipe. We actually have, if you go to the last page, let's just go there, and we'll talk for 30 seconds, and then I'll let you guys go for the... Okay? Because the casual reading will get you where you need to go if you really want to know about this or voting, you know, mindset. The arc design, right? The arc design encourages continuous building by the beaver, then prevents debris from flowing over the dam edge. We actually have a 12-foot wide dam that goes over a concrete dam. So we're not going into a pipe. The pipe is, I mean, a good size. It's at least a 6 foot by 6 foot. I believe it's an oval, or a long shape, that goes through. It does not go straight through. It actually kicks and then kicks back as it comes under the road and kicks out the other side. So it's a large area, and that's why he likes it. It has a straight line. He likes to build his dam on a straight line. The idea of the culvert, he doesn't have a straight line. He gets confused. He kind of just doesn't build, he'll cut wood and leave it there, but he won't be building an actual physical dam.
I think your question, rather, is if you put the pipe and fence combination that you talked about.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the one picture on the page before that.
How big is the pipe?
12 inches diameter, 8 inches diameter.
Because I could just pitch when we start with pipe.
So I'm trying not to do a whole presentation here, so I'm just, because I'm just trying to give you the ideas. But, so to go back, the answer to your question is, if you go to page 2, page, is it page 2? 1, 2, 3. Page 3, we will get what we call a flow rate from that. What is the normal flow rate that comes over that bridge or that dam? And then from there, we can determine what size piping we would want, whether it's a 2, a 6, or 2 sixes, or 2 eights, to keep up with that flow rate that goes through. That's if we were to have need for that. I'll get there. The arc design allows us to do that. So if you look at the top of page 3 now, you're seeing where, like, if a dam was formed, right? A pipe going through allows the beaver to have his dam, stops him from continuing the building, right? Because he already built a dam that's working. We have a pipe that goes through his dam, so he doesn't hear any running water anymore. But then on the other side of that pipe, we can set the whole level for our lake on the other side of his dam. By simply turning a pipe downward, we can lower the thing if we want to do work on the water's edge. And then by simply turning that pipe back upwards, we can get the water to go back up, you know, 6 to 7 inches or something like that. And then again, right underneath that, you can see where it's like a big perforated pipe goes through the dam, and then we would have an open end on the other side.
So this is a deterrent for him to build anything there? Or will he build still around it?
He will still continue to build around it.
Because my feeling is, if he doesn't want to build there, he's going to go somewhere else in the lake and build somewhere else.
So, that's where we get into, like, why Mr., you know, Mr. Secola's opinion, my opinion is, I would like to go for the arc design. That's in an email right now to John Kontois. That is my top, I'm sorry, I keep saying his wrong name, Dennis Kontois. That we're looking for the arc design, which actually encourages him to kind of build with what we want him doing, like, he's feeling comfortable building there. He's dropping things, then we can go and pull them out. By putting the 12-inch board in, the work he's doing feels like he's doing what he wants to do. He's getting higher water levels. He's able to drag branches across. He'll put some there. If we want to go in there and pull a couple out, we eliminate the gentleman who lives across the street from going over and pulling things out on their own. We, as a town, have addressed the situation. We are putting a fence up that is stopping debris from blowing over, or, you know, being washed over. That is, then you're going to go downriver that he is concerned with, and flooding other culverts or other bridges, because that feeds to Hammer and Turnpike, which has another situation going under there. Debris builds up sometimes, and backlogs from there. So this would prevent some of that debris from going over, not just his debris, but debris in general that we get in the lake that would then go over the edge. So again, the arc design is, you know, long-term lake flow leverage can be installed to relieve pressure on the beaver-built section. The arc design also relieves pressure on the 12-inch board that's there, so the 12-inch board is not in danger of being pushed out or broken out, or whatever it is. Long-term plan, the beaver will build around the design. Water will flow freely through the pipe outlet or over the top of the 12-inch board, which will raise the water, restoring the lake to former ecological status. Water flow will stabilize. Heavy rains will no longer threaten the stability of the system as a whole. Design also allows for water height to be adjusted. Right? Yeah. Quick and dirty, we can throw what you're seeing at the top of your page here, right? Which is a fence design. Bam, I'm out there for maybe 4 hours with a bunch of guys. We're hammering some stakes in the ground. We're putting some cattle fence around. He gets this weird trapezoid shape. That's it. At the end of the season, we can pull it out. Or even, every year, we just go and clean his debris from around it. We leave it there, and that's it. You know, that is the one where I fear may create a situation where he's like, I don't see where I'm supposed to be doing this. Maybe I should go upriver, or something like that, or downriver, whatever it is. And again, trapezoid design is a branch of the design that will discourage building at the present site. Beaver will no longer have a clear water line to build on. Though this design may encourage building elsewhere, it will address the immediate problem of citizens to, you know, arguing with one another and showing that we are addressing the situation. We can put it in, beaver starts to build somewhere else, we bust out that dam, we take the culvert out, we figure out another solution, you know, we can stay fluid with the situation. Short-term, I believe, the design will stop the building of the waterfall site. The board addition will raise the water level enough for a healthy beaver environment. Raised water will also assist the lake management and allow for the water's edge to be replanted with local species of lake plants. Long-term maintenance of this design is easy with minimal efforts, each year with the local lake cleanup maintenance day. Right? You have no idea who I am, who's Mr. Secola. How, we know he's just, you know, not saying, like, stuff and making it up as we go along. Read the supporting information that I've given you. Do a little research on your own, and it will show that these are the two best designs that are being used with everyone that is north of us, pretty much. Throughout New Hampshire, Maine, this is what they do when they want to keep ecology and citizens and everybody happy. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
General Field, 17 Cedar Street. Have a question. Did we ever get a, an answer as far as what bumped off the beaver?
No.
Shouldn't we be getting a report?
Who took the beaver? And I'll tell you.
Lisa, you know, they sent it out. I'd say, I'd follow with Lisa. I know she's been out on medical stuff.
I don't have the answer for you.
All right.
I love him, dude.
It's something that we should look into, only because we really don't want to bump off beavers. You know, we want them to have, be happy. The mommy and the kids have the rest of the river. Thank you.
Just to touch note, I don't know if I'm allowed, my left hand. So, water level reduces the issue of the beaver's home having an issue with ice sheets going down. Far, our lake at this point is so low that that whole lake pretty much freezes almost to the bottom, which again, your ecology is being affected by the fact that there is no free flow underneath that, which creates rock and aerobic decay, which creates problems with oxygen in the lake and other healthy systems and things like that. Beaver water allows for water flow underneath the ice sheet, which allows for things to go wrong during the winter season.
Thank you. Anyone else? So you know one motion to close?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do not have an executive session tonight, so... Our next meeting is June 3rd. That will be at 6 o'clock. We have an early executive that day, on June 3rd. Do I have a motion to?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.